Good evening. I'd like to call the Oxford School Committee meeting to order, today being February 27th. Let's see, this evening, our student rep is not here, and Mr. Anderson is not at the meeting. He is absent tonight. So we will start right in with our February 13th meeting minutes, please. January 9th. Are there any corrections or comments on these meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, three affirmative, one absent, one abstention. Thank you. We also have in our packet, uh... Let's see, is this a quorum? One, two, three, yes, we have a quorum now. January 9th executive session minutes, please.
Move to accept.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
And I vote yes. Three affirmative, one abstention, one absent. These meeting minutes are also approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And as we know, it's still budget season, so we're going to go right into the budget discussion that we have this evening. I did ask the superintendent and Mr. Matthew to please add into our budget the per pupil expenditures. I know that it's late, and I know the information just came in just to you now, and that's my fault. Forgive me for that. It's just something I think we need to take a look at, knowing that this budget, we are trying with all diligence to keep at a number we can operate with and restore, hopefully, some of the positions to get our district back up into a progressive manner. So, here we go. Mr. Superintendent, if you would, or Mr. Matthew, whoever would like to take the hand here, and tell us how our budget's looking right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. As you note, in the packet, Mr. Matthew gave us the updated revenue projections from the town. The town has worked on the health insurance numbers, and so the new number is $14,899.948. And obviously, there's still a lot of mileage to take place in Boston, but based upon where the town stands, we look for that number to hold for now, and wait and see what the House and Senate do with the governor's budget. Obviously, we have made some severe cuts, as we've outlined, over the past couple of years, both in terms of teachers as well as programs. We are realistic in that we don't expect to be able to get them all back in FY13. However, given all of the factors that we are facing, with four contracts open for negotiations, with the mandates that have been placed upon us by virtue of being a Level III district, the fact that we have to negotiate the educator evaluation standards, there is an awful lot of things in play, and a budget of $14,899 certainly is not an ideal budget, but it is certainly a realistic one, given where we stand with the town. And I'd like, if Mr. Matthew has any comments to add him at this time.
Well, the primary change here was, the initial budget was put together with estimated health insurance increases after meeting with our health insurance advisor. The numbers before you are more realistic in terms of what we can expect, at least for a high watermark for health insurance increases for next year. And unfortunately, with those actual numbers or actual estimates, now, we did lose about $60,000 in the overall scheme of things, shifted away from the operating budget to health insurance to cover those costs. You know, I think this is probably the last of the changes from the town, at least in terms of going, our budget going down and costs going up. If anything, as the numbers are finalized, I would hope that the health insurance costs actually come down a little bit more, and more money flows into our operating budget. But that's still to be determined, of course.
Sure, sure. It's still, as we know, work in progress.
And I know the committee just received the per pupil expenditures, and it is indicated in the memo here, but I do want to make it clear, these numbers are from the state. They're available on the state DESE website. And the per pupil expenditures, as computed by the state, for everybody, not just Oxford, obviously, include all of those town expenses on behalf of the schools, such as health insurance in our case, and facilities and maintenance in our case, and all of those costs that are detailed in those budget pages, as well as all money from grants revolving funds. So it's the most comprehensive look at an individual town or comparison between towns. However, there are some variables inside of there, besides, obviously, the amount of funding, but even the town support of the schools, the town expenses on behalf of the schools, such as health insurance. Those agreements vary from town to town, from community to community. So while this is as good as it gets, there are some caveats that you need to be aware of when looking at these numbers.
Okay. Anything from the committee? Nothing? Okay, we'll move along on the budget. Actually, the other, another portion of the business is the Race to the Top. Superintendent is going to give us a report on the funds for Race to the Top.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. As everyone may remember, Race to the Top was born out of the ERA, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. And part of that monies, that $787 billion, was a small line called Race to the Top funding. And that was about $5.1 billion that states could compete to be allocated for. And in lieu of reauthorizing No Trial Left Behind, that was a pretty neat scheme by the Department of Education to get some real change in how we do business in the world of public education. And from that Race to the Top, the state, on its second try, received $250 million. And out of that, half of that went directly to the state through DESE to be used on programs to improve the bottom line of our students' performance, and the other half, about $125 million, went directly to local school districts. Districts could not pursue it if they chose not to. Some districts did not want to become a Race to the Top district. In most districts where funding is tight, it was worth the hoops to jump through to receive this funding. Oxford Public Schools will receive in total about $230,000 of Race to the Top funding, spread over four years, with the majority of it coming in the last two years, FY13, FY14. And...
What was that figure again?
The Oxford Race to the Top share is about $230,000. FY11, FY12, FY13, and 14, the majority of the money is allocated in 13 and 14. There was over 30 projects to choose from. Obviously, they had to be vetted and approved by DESE. And we have chosen, obviously, to increase our teacher effectiveness, our teacher capacity, to work with updating our curriculum and matching to frameworks, as well as utilizing technology through the data warehouse and the CIF, the Interoperability Framework, for our technology. Some of the projects, we were not eligible for, thank goodness, such as Level IV and Level V. And, as I said, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, to receive this money, to allocate the spend, and to show the accountability. Certainly, the auditors have already been here once, as part of the new state auditor's mission to have accountability throughout public education. And this Race to the Top, no matter how you look at it, is a good thing. And I know there are political wins that say it's not worth it, but I feel strongly that the money is a part of it, as well as the initiatives that we will undertake through this grant funding. Along with the Race to the Top, we have been designated as a Level III district, and that is purely because we do not meet adequate yearly progress. That does not mean that we are singled out, because most districts in the Commonwealth and most districts across the country are not making AYP. And so we are receiving Level III assistance through DESE, through the District and School Initiative Center, which is money that is, which is services that is no cost to us, but is funded partly through the other half of that federal Race to the Top money that went to DESE. Tied into all of this is the educator evaluation standards, which were also a big part of Race to the Top. And this was the political ripple that was caused by teachers' unions feeling that they were being dismantled at the expense of this initiative. And that is certainly not the case in most of the Commonwealth, and certainly not the case here. We are working as partners. I think the committee has made that clear in our negotiations with all of our units, especially with our teachers, that we have to work together to improve our test scores, and in turn, improve our students' outcomes, so that they have the ability to be successful when they leave us. And not to digress, but as a side note, we all know the job market and what is out there. And if you talk to any, anyone in that 17 to 25, 28 demographic, they know all too well how difficult it is to find a job that can support them, and how to match up their training and their education to be able to have them prepared to take their place in society. And I think that, you know, there's no shortage of statistics that show many of the current jobs were not around even 15 years ago. And some of the job categories, most of us older folks have a tough time deciphering. And it is up to us to make sure that our students are prepared to meet the challenges of a very changing, rapidly changing, job market. And so it is our goal that through the use of the Race to the Top funding, as well as our Level III assistance, as well as adopting our educator evaluation standards, which we must do by the fall, and we are in the process of setting that up, and along with negotiating with all of our units, to make sure that everybody is on board with what our mission is, is really an intersection of what is our mission, and that is to improve education for all of our kids, so that they all have an opportunity to be successful when they leave us. And so I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you do have. We are in the process of, through teacher negotiations, creating more planning time, so that we can work on all of these initiatives, so that we can improve. And I think that I will look forward to reporting over the next, well, certainly the balance of this year, what we are doing to adopt these initiatives, to make us a better district for all of our kids. And that's really our bottom line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on, we will now have a report from the Wellness Committee. Ms. Hokinson can come on up. Thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
You could tell us how things are going. Could you also tell us tonight who's on the committee with you?
Yes. Let me tell you who's on the committee first. We have Rhonda Donnie, who's a parent, Kaylee Van Gill, and Brianna DePlato, who are college students that will be leaving us soon, Mr. Himmelberger, Katie Shan, Sandy Rivet, Linda Forte, and Mike Peterson.
Good, good group, okay.
We are looking for new members, because we're going to be losing some.
Okay.
The update is, we have our schedule for the taste testings that we're going to do.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to have a fruit and vegetable tasting with the preschool and kindergarten students, and the middle school will be having one, and that goes, Mrs. Goulas puts that together. She's been doing that for about six years. And that one is going to be on March 9th. The March 14th, we're going to have the Clara Barton preschoolers, and there'll be two separate groups on that one. March 20th will be more preschoolers with 13 kids, and the 21st is going to be other kindergartners at Chapie School.
Okay.
And we're going to have a, put a little educational thing before and read a story. I know Mr. Yvonne is very into it, and he's excited to read the kids, about a 300-pound pig or something. So that's, we're looking forward to that. I think that's going to be a lot of fun.
Okay.
Our next meeting, we were gonna, I was going to come back and let you know how that went, but we have to get more members on for next year, because we're going to have all the new regulations coming up, and we would like to get somebody from the PTOs from each school to be able to help us with that, because we're going to need somebody in each school to watch what's going on, if you will.
Have you talked to any of the principals and...
Not, I haven't gone that far yet.
Okay.
I'm going to, that's something I'm working on.
Okay, if I could suggest, maybe if you could attend a PTO meeting, you might be able to rally a couple...
Okay.
...parents, you know, if you get that schedule.
Yeah, it's hard to get people, I know people are busy, but...
Very difficult, yeah.
We got to get more people on. And that's it. If I can throw a little plug out there...
Please, yeah.
The new milk regulation that's coming, the new flavored milk. We'd like to get some parents' input on it, and we can get it through, shoot me an email or maybe through Mr. Peterson, and we can get something down to the State House, to the state reps, and try and get it changed over.
Okay.
Or if they, put it on hold, so they can relook at it again. Flavored milk is a big choice over white milk. And from a parent point of view, I would rather see my child getting calcium and vitamin D through chocolate milk than not having it at all. So, we'll see what we can do.
I think probably Mr. Himmelberger can help you with that, if we can get that posted on the web, even maybe a flyer going home from the committee itself, if you want to put something together, and we can send something home, if that helps. Go ahead.
If I may, even though I might seem like the logical choice here, it might be better off to come either through the Wellness Committee or the PTOs, only because we receive federal funding.
Okay.
And I wouldn't want to step on anyone's toes...
Sure.
Especially in Washington. So...
Or you'll be in for an audit.
Well, we're leading the league in audits, but I think certainly what Pat has explained is really, I think, part of what doesn't seem to be a fully thought-out policy, and on the part of the federal government. Because as she had said, we sell a lot of flavored milk, and there are a lot of our students that just don't like plain white milk.
Sure.
And so I think it would be a great grassroots movement for the PTOs, certainly, and invite all concerned parents to get in touch with the Wellness Committee, to see what the proper outlet would be to communicate that to both Boston and Washington.
If maybe with your interns, with your students, maybe put together some kind of a notice, and, you know, just, it just needs to be approved by the superintendent, and then it can go. And of course, the website and the cable channel, you have access to.
Yep, that'd be great.
That, you know, market it the best way you can, and just get that splash out there that, you know, you're looking for information, and hopefully, hopefully...
It'll snowball, and we'll have a lot of people behind us.
If you can, you know what, if, seriously, if you can get 10 to 15, I think you'd be ahead of it. So, you know, just do the best you can. With something like that, it's very difficult, we all know, it's very difficult to get involvement, unfortunately, but try your best.
Got to try and do what we can do.
That's it. Try your best. Mr. Peterson?
She's mentioned the PTOs, but we also discussed, and we did have a coach on at one time, which was the AD director, but we need, we need somebody from the coaching staff, also from the Booster Club, because a lot of these new regulations are going to affect not only us in-house, but how we sell or project exterior for games, for fundraisers, everything else. So Pat has already taken an initiative, and the committee has already sent me letters.
Great.
My email can be used also. I don't know, whatever you draft, you can give to the superintendent, get it on the TV, and my email, as well as yours, and we'll compile them in one. If they want to send them directly to Washington or to the State House, that's fine. If not, a lot of people don't feel comfortable doing that, send them to us, we'll deal with the state and federal level reps and senators that we need to, at the time we need to. We have an opportunity, March 27th, we have the Day on the Hill coming up, so I'd really like to get some stuff in as quickly as possible. We have some great letters right here from Pat tonight, that she gave to me, but the more, the better.
Absolutely.
And like you said, 10-15, but I think we can do better than that, because a lot of these regulations that people don't understand, and have seen in the newspaper, probably just are passing off, are going to affect football games, basketball games, our Booster Club, our fundraising projects, as what they can sell also on our premises, okay?
All right. That's good to know that...
So I would put that plea out there to anybody listening tonight, as well as Pat has asked for PTO, I'll try to attend them with her or whatever, and I'll talk to the AD and see if we can get a coach or somebody else involved again, and even a teacher. We have some now, but we really need the PTOs and the Booster Club, basically, because they're the ones that do the outside fundraising and extra fundraising, and have parties and things here internally for birthdays and things of that nature also.
One of the things you may be able to do is invite them in, you know, give them a phone call. I think all of their names and numbers are listed. I know on the high school website, the boosters are, and the PTOs, they're on the other schools. Call whoever the chair is and explain to them what you're doing. I know that I've, anytime I've had to call for information or anything like that, they're very good, and they will, they'll help you as best they can, so...
Okay.
And they can bring it to their membership, you know. So sometimes you have to be the one to reach out and invite them in, and then they...
Absolutely.
They do respond, they do respond and take an interest, and that's good. We appreciate that. Mr. Peterson?
Just a final comment. I want to thank everybody, because they've worked hard, all the way back to Angie, from the inception of this, to get our wellness statement prepared. And Ms. Hokinson has done a great job working with it over the year to tweak it and add additional things that we're working on, which you'll get further comments on probably at one of the next meetings, as she gets things more in line again.
Sure.
But she's done a great job, and I'd like to thank her and the committee for their efforts.
Thank you.
And we thank you also very much for...
Absolutely.
We know it's hard, it's hard to have a subcommittee that has to report to the school committee, but thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Moving on down the agenda, Mr. Matthew has our bid review for the transportation of our students.
Thank you. On February 17th, we did open the bids that were received for our transportation contract to cover fiscal years 13, 14, and 15. There were two official bids received, one from First Student, the previous provider of transportation to the district, and Durham School Services, the current provider of transportation. The lowest bid does represent a 12% increase from last, from the current year to next year, in terms of price increase. Based on that, the percentage increase, it's both the superintendent's recommendation and mine to the committee, that it reject this round of bids and put it back out on the streets. We think that by tweaking some language in there, we might be able to achieve a level of reductions to this increase that will help better meet our budget.
That's a lot. 12%, that's, I don't think we expected that, but as far as that, your recommendation of the superintendent and yourself goes, absolutely. I hate to have to look at doing something else with transportation in this community, that's for sure. Mr. Peterson?
The 12%, I can understand what you're saying, and it's a, I'm surprised that it's them that's the lowest bid. But the language is my concern, and you alluded to one issue here, but tweaking of the language, before it goes back out to bid, could we see those, or could we, could I see those or something with you at the same time?
Sure, absolutely.
Is it solely computer that you're really concerned about, the expense of the computer situation, or is there additional language in the busing?
I think, I think what we, what we need to do, based on these, you know, potential increases, is really go through our requirements to make sure that we're trying, that we're putting a competitive bid package out there for the transportation vendors. And I know that the superintendent, when he was in my role previously, you know, was successful in putting it out, back out to bid, in, you know, modifying the previous requirements. And I think it's always going to be a work in progress, or a living document, you know, that needs to change, you know, minor things here and there, but, you know, as the world changes, or as the world turns, so should the requirements. And I think that, you know, we were surprised at the rate of increase as well for the next year, and, you know, think that we might be able to mitigate that a bit.
Okay. If I could just ask a quick question. In regard to the use of the computer routing and all of that, that we had done with our current transportation provider, I don't think, and this is just me, you know, knowing the town and how many students we pick up, I don't really think that we need a computer program to route our pickups and drop-offs, sincerely. I mean, we're not adding roads and things like that, we're not doing those kind of things. We have some of the best bus drivers, we have a few that are so, so well-seasoned that know the ins and outs of the pickups and drop-offs, that they can really just do it, it's like a natural occurrence for them. So in saying that, I am not a fan of using this computer routing program again, after the fiasco that we had with our current transportation provider. So in saying that, that might be one of the things, if that is part of the cost that maybe is driving up some of this, well, I don't know how you would word it, because it's your bid document, it's not for us to step on, but I wouldn't even entertain it. I would hope that whoever the transportation provider is takes advantage of our seasoned drivers and understands their role in this community. Some of these people have been driving, surely, what, 30-something years? You know, we're talking millions of miles they've driven.
And multiple generations.
Absolutely. So in saying that, if that's part of the cost increases, those, that computer program, don't get me wrong, sometimes this kind of software can be good for, for other things, or different, in a different role here, but as far as rooting out, you know, stepping out and routing down all of our drop-offs and pickups and everything to start school, it's unnecessary in this community, as far as I'm concerned, okay? So that's something... So, that's something I hope, I hope maybe, you know, you can, you can look into, but I understand the reason to increase and, I mean, sorry, not increase, to put it back out, to rebid, you know, that's, I mean, we have to. You have to, so.
And I, I do want to be clear with the committee, there's no guarantee that even by changing all of the language and all of the requirements, that we will absolutely get a lower price. But it's a reasonable expectation, I think.
Okay. Mr. Peterson.
Well, we did this last time it went out to rebid, when we changed companies even three years ago. When does this contract expire? June?
Yes, the end of this.
You've, you've said that it's twelve percent increase for the daily rate from just FY twelve to FY thirteen. Is that per year? Or did you put out a three-year bid again?
It's a three-year bid, yes, but all I did, all I did.
All you, all you compared to was this first year of twelve percent, so what were the next two years ensuing? Were they higher, twelve percent across the board, nine percent the second year?
There was approximately a nine to ten dollar increase on the daily rate.
Per year?
For year two and year three.
And what is the daily rate right now?
I don't have the current daily rate. The low bid here was three-twenty-seven ninety-five.
Three-twenty-seven?
Yep.
For the year?
For the year.
Per year? I'm all for putting it out for rebid. We did it last time, it worked out to our benefit. My only concern is, again, in the language, that something like the late, late buses and dropped, or something of that nature, that it's still, because we did that one year, we dropped the late buses and then had to bring them back, because it cost us more to bring them back. So, that's my only concern or caution of that nature, as you do this. Mrs. Ennis said it is your bid, but it, it's your, your language, but it is actually our bid, so it, it does concern me, so again, like to.
I'm, I'm more than happy to work with.
No, I understand it.
Either yourself or the Transportation Subcommittee, which I think.
But it does seem like a high increase, even, it's, it's all based on speculation, again, with insurance and, and gas and everything else, but somebody has to stop these speculations somewhere. Thank you.
Do you need a vote of the committee?
Yes, the committee does need to.
I would move to follow a.
Thank you.
Business managers' lead at this point in time, and put it up for rebid.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote, any comment, question? Thank you, a call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, four affirmative, one absent, one absent for reopening the bid process. Thank you. Okay, next down the list on the agenda here, just as a reminder, as part of the correspondence, that there is a meeting in Dudley, March first, at six o'clock with State Rep Durant. I think I've passed everything off to everyone. This is strictly a Chapter Seventy Roundtable Meeting, and you probably may have gotten a reminder in your email today, if you didn't get to RSVP. So, I know that I will be going, I don't know who else is going, but I will definitely be there, God willing. Next on our agenda is, we're going to get a report from Mrs. Raveli. She has started a curriculum advisory committee, and she's going to tell us how things are
How things are going? Not yet, we've set a tentative date for first meeting, which is March, let me look. I believe the fourteenth.
I believe so.
She caught me off-guard again. Yes, March fourteenth.
Okay.
At three forty-five. It's a tentative meeting.
What time?
At this point, we're just, and the only reason why it's tentative, is that I need to speak to Mr. Wells.
Okay.
Or, or Ms. Hackenson regarding a space, deciding on where. Ms. Hackett, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Regarding space. Other than that, it looks good. I think I had fourteen people at last count.
Can you tell us who you have?
Teachers, sure. I have Susan Pelletier, Casey Bush, Lois Dore, Karen Ruiz, Miriam King, Susan Galant, Elaine Goulas, Courtney Nugent, Joe Generico.
Yep.
Dendra Boudreaux.
Boudreaux.
Boudreaux? Is that it? Boudreaux?
Yep.
Sorry, Dendra. And Mr., Mr. Yvonne, and who says he's bringing two, he'll be bringing two more, he said, from his school.
Great, that's good, that's a great group.
So, that's quite a group, and I also have two parents that are interested in trying to get there.
That's great, that's, well, the group of teachers and Mr. Yvonne, that's a very good group there.
So, the only thing that I'm missing is, again, to, to speak to Mr. Wells regarding possibly a few students.
Okay.
I think that was mentioned.
Yep.
And, and a space.
Okay.
And we're all set to go.
Excellent, very good. Well, we look forward to hearing how things are going, and, and your report that you'll submit to the superintendent and to the committee, your recommendations. Thank you very much. Now, from Superintendent of Schools, if you have anything further, Mr. Himmelberger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two points I wanted to make sure I got out, and one was to our students, and one was to our parents. And to the parents, I wanted to urge everyone to please become familiar with the budget process, and feel free to stop by, again, to the central office on the top floor of the Community Center, if you want to look through the budget book. I think it is important that as many taxpayers and voters as possible are, are up to speed on what we are asking for, and again, if you can also attend town meeting the first Wednesday in May. It's your town, and I think school budgets need to be supported by a wide variety of folks. So, that is my message for the parents. To the students, I want everyone to know that we are rapidly turning the corner to the second half of the year and third quarter, and for those students that are doing well, continue to be curious and explore your studies with vigor. To students who are maybe not as happy as where they are currently, there is still time to save the year, and to improve upon your four-year record, and your future as you move through the Oxford Public Schools. So, I know everyone had a wonderful, snowless vacation week last week, and it, it's a, a stretch now that we're in, as we get into the long March, through March, and it is a great time for everybody to really take stock of where they are, and, and make sure that they have their plans in place to do as well as they can. And I would urge every student to work with their teachers, and to make sure that they involve their folks, to do the best they can. I think it is, there's an awful lot of opportunity, it's out there, just ask for it, and just take advantage of it. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From our business manager, Mr. Matthew.
Nothing else this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. School committee members, I'll start with Mr. Peterson.
Somewhere I had seen originally, but I, I see that the agenda was changed, apparently, but the budget hearing, what is the official date for that? Have you set?
Are you going to have the budget hearing, a public hearing will be March twenty-sixth. The reason it was changed is, we couldn't get it, and the TNG wouldn't take the posting.
Hmm.
So, we're going to have it for March twenty-sixth.
I just wanted to confirm a date.
Yeah, and that will be the only item on the agenda that evening, unless we have other business, just so everyone knows.
I had asked the superintendent, the business manager, and Mr. Wells, prior to our other meeting, Madam Chair, the, well, I guess I won't call it that, the granite gravestone, I call it out front, that was donated by one of the classes, has been knocked over again, and I was curious, I just want the public to know, because I had been asked, especially in a year of no snow, if the plow knocked it over or what, but because of the vandalism and the way it has to be fixed this time with rerod put in it, instead of just putting it back on its foundation, they're, they're seeking out someone to do it, so that's the reason it's still lying on the ground, all right?
Thanks.
I believe that, that's, if I'm stating that right, Mr. Superintendent. I just, the only reason I bring it up now is I got my answer, but I want the public to know why it's there and why they questioned me. I alluded to earlier, the Day on the Hill, there's some opportunity, again, you've all been notified, or gotten yours probably in the mail, but I, I will be attending, so if there's anything anyone wants to have discussed, or gotten to me prior to that date, please do so. I forgot about this a couple times ago, but we're getting into a more daylight season, so it's probably not going to matter as much, but we do have some exterior lights, Mr. Business Manager. I would like all schools to take a tour, if it's the principal, or the head custodian, or whatever, or both together, dusk, night, whatever, or early, early morning when they get there, if it's still dark, to go through all of their exterior lights, every single building, and I didn't write them down, I didn't bring it to you, but I will if need be, but every single building has exterior lights that are not functioning. So, I would like that taken care of, please. That's all I have for tonight, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Raveli?
The only thing that I have is, with the curriculum advisory committee, it would be really nice to have more parents.
Okay.
So, just a plea for parents to come on out, and see what's going on in the schools, and get to know what's going on, and help, help these wonderful teachers that have come forward to give some advice to where we go from here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mrs. Conan?
I have nothing.
You have nothing this evening, okay. And I have nothing right now either, so. That is it for our meeting. We will have a call for executive session, under Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One, Subsections Two and Three, both strategy sessions for preparations and negotiations of non-union personnel, and also to discuss collective bargaining, bargaining or litigation for union personnel. I would like a motion, please, to go into executive session.
Question first, I, or a statement, please, that we will not be returning for any votes, this will be adjournment from the executive session, or what, what your intention, ma'am?
Let's see.
Or if you're coming back to adjourn, it's one thing, leaving it open for?
No, I think that we're just going to adjourn. Yeah, we won't have any votes.
So moved, then.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, we are now in executive session. Thank you very much for coming in this evening, appreciate it.